We're on good.
Okay, I have seven o'clock, so Jan, if you would like, I'll give you a three-second countdown.
Okay, I'm texting Jackie to see.
Oh, okay. We can hold on for a minute?
I think it was nameplates.
Could have brought my name from the old office. And then left there and took it with me. So we're pretty much working.
I have the door plug on my office.
It's like when the next person came along, they could change it?
Doug, you can go ahead. I want to just go ahead and start.
Okay.
It's acrylic.
All right, so we're gonna start here in three seconds, so three, two...
Recording in progress.
Good morning, or good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Scioto Township Planning Commission meeting for February 28, 2022, and it is 7:02. And I just want to say that we are using, continuing to use our hybrid format, so we have people in attendance in the room and also online. And this evening, we do not have any public hearings, so public comment is scheduled upfront. And so anyone wanting to address the Planning Commission on anything that is on the agenda tonight, or that is not on the agenda, you should do so during public comment. And the way that we'll do it is we'll ask for those who want to make public comment here in the room first, and then we'll move to those online. And online, Mr. Luwan, I'll ask you to raise your hand, and we'll move on that. And we ask people to please keep your comments to three minutes unless you're representing an organization, and then it's five minutes. And with that, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Well, call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Sharma?
Present.
Commissioner Hyde?
Present.
Commissioner Chang, present. Commissioner Culbertson?
Present. All right, next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to amend the agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda will be as posted. Communications and correspondence. Won't receive any... Okay. Any others that came in? All right. And there are no presentations this evening as requested by the Planning Commission, so we'll move on to public comment. And citizens wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are are not on a public hearing, which we have none tonight, or to seek information on any other matters, we'll start with folks that are in the room. There is a sign-up sheet for public comment. If you would please leave your name and address. And so I will open public comment at 7:04. So if there's anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission this evening, please come forward.
Do we talk about Heritage Woods? Should we talk about that now?
You should talk about that right now.
Okay. And my name is David Spicer. And good evening, Plan Commission. Others present and notes on Zoom. We're still having issues with the proposed boulevard at Heritage Woods. If I'm heading north from Jackson to get to my house, I must wait at the light to turn left onto the boulevard. Then I must drive an eighth mile and wait for traffic to clear so I can make a U-turn to head back towards Baker Road. Then when I get there, I must wait at Baker Road light again till the traffic in front of me clears, then I can turn right finally and be on my driveway. That would be my third turn just to get to my house. As I have stated here before, I am very concerned and worried about turning a 40-foot tagline trailer through this maze. MDOT finds this boulevard arrangement acceptable for this development. We do not. We have not been in the conversation about the boulevard, and I don't know why we never got into the conversation with MDOT in the first place. We find this to be a tactic of bullying and ask the Planning Commission to recognize this. We also ask the Planning Commission to say no unless there's a major change in what's going on right now. Thank you for your time.
My name is Eugene Catton. I live at 609 Baker Road. That's the property just south of the boulevard. I would love to see the development go through. I purchased the property at the intersection specifically for investment potential. As it's set up right now, this would surround me on three sides, on two sides. There's 1,800 vehicles per day on the boulevard. The boulevard itself is 45 feet away from my son's bedroom. Being forced to use the property, being forced to use the boulevard devalues my property as residential by as much as 50% and as much as 65% with commercial intent. We've been in contact with two petroleum companies. Both have interest in the property, but not if they have to use the boulevard to access the property. If you came straight in off Baker Road like it is right now, it's worth substantially more to them than it would be if they have to access the boulevard, which makes sense. People would rather just use the gas station across the street as opposed to something you have to go through a maze to get. Both of these companies have been to the Township Hall to understand the bylaws and are trying to put some form of proposal together on our behalf. Would like to see, would like to be involved in this development as opposed to having to be built around. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Clark with ET McKenzie Company, and I am here tonight regarding new business item number one.
Yeah, Doug? You're gonna have time. You're the applicant, so you will have...
Oh, okay. All right. I thought they were talking about Heritage Woods down here.
We're at number six.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have clarified that applicants, yeah, will be allowed to do a short presentation for their items.
Go ahead, Jared.
Hi, I'm Jerry Smith. I own the Farm or Smith Trust. I'm the trustee of it that's, they're trying to put the project in. And we're kind of looking for, we tried to maintain the integrity off of Marshall Road so that we could, my wife and I and my brothers live in a farmhouse. We continue to live there, so we've kind of worked it so we would still have the integrity of Marshall Road to continue to live there and not change our lives any, so. So I guess I'm kind of pro it, and so anyway. And the other point I was gonna make about, I think somebody mentioned something about Mill Creek. I think all the water that flows into Mill Creek from the project, if, from farming, we get a lot of fertilizer and poison and round-up stuff they spray on, it washes down behind my house into Mill Creek. So it's actually a safer for that kind of stuff, and... So I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I realize it is hard sometimes for people to wear their mask when they're talking, but we do, unless there's help or something like that, we would ask that you keep your mask on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Smith, part owner, and I live in 1989 Old US 12 in Chelsea. And I'm in favor, as one of the owners, I think they're doing everything they can make this acceptable to the neighbors and to the easiness of getting on the expressway by where the road comes out. And I just feel it's a good project. They're leaving green areas for people, walking areas for people. And I just feel that it's a good thing for our property to go into this project, so. Access to the highway is easy from that project. You can get on the westbound 94. Eastbound is just over the bridge, and even Jackson Road is easy to get at. So I think that would be a plus for traffic problems. So, kind of nervous. I think that's about it that I got to say. Although they did, you know, bridgers are complaining so much. They did, they are leaving a buffer zone, and so... And actually, these people in the corner, they'll probably make their property worth more with that boulevard because they can sell it. And they've been trying to sell it for the last 20 years, so. So I guess that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to address the Planning Commission this evening? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll turn to online.
We have, as of right now, we have one hand up, and that's Rob and Joe Pattinson. So the name Rob and Joe Pattinson, I'm gonna click the allow to speak, and you should have the floor.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township. I'm concerned about the Heritage Woods development. We've heard from several individuals and several families about problems associated with this proposal. We've also heard from a Centennial Farm family that fears their livelihood is in danger. There is also a neighbor who will have a road put within 45 feet of his home, and we just heard it's 45 feet of his son's bedroom. As someone who lives close to the highway, I can attest to the incompatibility of this location for a restful retirement home for our elders. It's just too noisy. At the very least, the deed should reflect the permanent exemption from smell complaints towards their neighbors if this does indeed go through. We have a corporation moving in and a family that has been farming for over a century. Seems to me the purpose of local government is to protect its residents. I believe it is the duty of the Planning Commission to protect the family who have been farming for over 100 years instead of the corporation. Thank you.
We have another hand up, Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan, I'm gonna hit the button here, and the floor is yours.
Thank you for your time. I'll be brief. I want to echo Rob's comments and emphasize the agricultural nature of our environment. Having farmed here for over 10 years, I can attest to the difficulty and challenges that our agriculturally-inclined neighbors take on. And it doesn't need to be made more difficult with this process moving forward. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are no other hands up right now for public comment online.
All right. Wait just a few minutes. Sure, we're good? Then I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
To move.
Moved by Commissioner Moore and supported by Commissioner Hyde to close public comment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed at 7:16. All right, moving on to our business session. We have no public hearings this evening, no unfinished business. We do have new business of ET McKenzie Site Plan Amendment SP/DE #19007. And welcome. We'll hear from the applicant, any updates from our planning consultants, and then we'll entertain questions from the commission. So please go ahead. And again, there should be a specific sheet for you to sign on.
Okay.
Yeah.
My name is Ron Clark with ET McKenzie Company, and we're here tonight to address three, or two minor site plan amendments to our site plan of our new office building out on Jackson Road. We've asked that we be allowed to not build the fence along our eastern property line, which was required because our property is owned industrial and the neighboring property is still zoned agriculture. It's a little four-acre piece in there. So that, it was, it's time back in 2019 when we started the site plan approval process. That house is being used as a rental house. Right now, there's been a business that's moved in there, a landscape business. They have outdoor storage of all their trucks and materials in the rear yard, which is the exact same use that we have approved on our properly-zoned property. So our first request was to not have to build that fence, that buffer fence, which is gonna be a solid screen fence along our eastern property line. We feel that with the change of use next door, situation of buffering now two identical types of uses is a thing of the past. And we actually don't believe that the A1 zoning will stay in place on that property for too much longer. The property is supposed to be zoned and used for a commercial or business or industrial use on a future land use plan. And we'd just like to not have to build that fence for no practical reason at all. There were pictures included with my request for this that showed how densely wooded the perimeter of the property still is. They've gone through and removed quite a few, probably township-regulated trees to build their storage yard on the property next door. Don't know that for a fact, but there were some good-sized trees over there. So those are the reasons why we feel that it's an onerous burden on us to build this fence for no good reason that still remains. The second minor amendment to the site plan we requested was for a deferment of the construction of sidewalk out along Jackson Road. The proposed sidewalk is shown on the plans, and it is entirely within the right-of-way of Jackson Road. At our last meeting, there was a brief question that went to an abrupt motion to table our whole request because, at the time, one of the planning commissioners, I don't know exactly which one, wanted to have us give away more right-of-way out front there. And I stated, well, we're not gonna change the title to our property. Absolutely no need to do that. And there are a lot of ramifications to anything like that that I'm sure the planning commissioners ought to be aware of. But anyway. So we'd like to defer the construction of the sidewalk, the trailer or the storage yard next door. I believe asked for the same thing, and the note appears on their plan. The staff has indicated that that sidewalk will be deferred. The closest sidewalk on the south side of the road is further on to the east at the end of the boulevard. So it's quite a ways away, and it'll probably be years before anything's connected to this walk. So those are the reasons why we'd like to wait to build that sidewalk along there. And then I'll be available for questions from the board or the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, I'll try to speak loud so everybody can hear me. So that was Ron Clark from ET McKenzie. And basically, what Mr. Clark summarized is what we found. The Planning Commission might remember that this item was tabled at the December 20 regular meeting of the Planning Commission. And part of the motion to table was based on discussion of the Planning Commission, and part of that discussion was to find out what happened on the property to the west, you know, if that, you know, how that property did not require a sidewalk. And then also, well, to do a little digging with the property next door to find out what the uses were next door. So we did that, and as you see from our memo of January 20, I pulled out the approved site plan for Pirate's Cove, which was the latest version of the Pirate's Cove subdivision. And the Planning Commission allowed the Pirate's Cove development to waive the sidewalk, but placed a note on the plan indicating that it would be installed at the request of the township. That was due, due in part that this part of Jackson Road does not have planned walkway. So if you look at the current Township master plan and the pathway master plan, there's no pathway planned, actually, for this part of Scioto. So it's not a sidewalk, according to our ordinance, that we can require. Now, we can always request these, but we can't require it. And so it would, you know, our comments indicate that if we were to allow the applicant to waive the sidewalk and put a note, you know, revise the site plan, put a note, or provide some kind of letter to the file, that we would be being consistent with what we've done to the property directly next door that was recently approved. And that's the new part, the latest version of the Pirate's Cove site plan. And then with regard to the property to the east, the applicant's right, this is currently being used in a non-residential manner. And I think the Planning Commission might remember at the time ET McKenzie was before us for their site plan, which at this point was a couple of years ago, I believe, Ron, it was while I was... There was, there was some discussion that that property might be put to a residential use. Well, that's obviously no longer the case. And in addition to the fact that it's being used in some sort of contractor's manner, I think we have to recognize the fact that it's zoned, or it's master planned for office industrial use. So it's not, this property to the east is not intended to be, you know, someone's home or several homes. It's really intended for an office industrial-type use. I provided the Planning Commission with some information on that. The, both the pedestrian master plan, that page of the Pirate's Cove site plan, and that shows the, that shows the note. And, let's see, oh, and then a copy of the master plan that shows that property being planned for office and industrial use. So we would support the applicant's request to waive the fence and to add a note to their site plan indicating that a pathway would be constructed, you know, at the request of the township. So we think what the applicant's requesting is, after doing additional research... what the applicant's requesting is after doing additional research is, in our opinion, reasonable.
Thank you. We'll move to planning commissioners. Do you have questions either of the applicant or of Mr. Loan?
Question, Mr. Loan. You indicated that you would put a note with regard to a pathway later on. Would it be a note in the file? Well, how would that work?
We could, well, we could do it as either a separate note in the file, or a better way to do it would for the applicant to revise that sheet of their site plan and provide that to the township.
And that would be a note saying what?
Yeah. And well, the note that was approved for Pirate's Cove indicates, it says deferred five foot concrete sidewalk to be installed upon the request of SIO Township. It shows the location of the walk is a dashed line and then with that note, actually on their site plan. And that's probably the best way to cover it because the site plan's a lot easier to find than a note in the file. So I would, I guess I'd recommend that they provide an amended sheet on that site, on their site plan.
Yes, I've already made that change and supplied that changed information back in October of last year. I believe it's on page 68 of your agenda package.
Tonight's agenda package?
Yes.
Any other questions from Mr. Loan?
I have a question for Mr. Loan. You said the, the property to the east is zoned A1, which is agricultural?
Yeah.
Does that zoning district allow for a landscaping company?
No.
So are they operating without permission to the east?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to, that's add that to our list.
I just was curious. And it looks like, so the commissioner, you, you're asking to waive the, the fence, but it looks like you do have some landscaping along the east property line for some screening there?
Yeah.
And it looks like there's a lot, well, it looked like from the aerials, a lot of landscaping there, but you're saying they, they took out some trees in there along that?
Over in the center of the property next door is where they removed trees for a driveway and, and a larger open space to park their trucks and, and store their materials. I think they've also now got a building back there. It might be a poly house or something like that. Or a salt shed. I'm not quite sure what it is from the aerial.
Is, is the, is the neighbor made any contact with the township whatsoever? I'm sure we gave them notification if they called the township with any
There's been no
Opposition or support?
Yeah, no, I, I don't believe this, there was no public notice required.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There was.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions?
A question with the, could the fence also be deferred? I'm just thinking, we don't know what will go in there, but if it's required at some point in time as, as the use goes in, that would require that screening?
Yeah, I think you could, I think you could defer the fence. The anything, the fence is actually part of the landscape section of the zoning ordinance. And the planning commission has the ability to waive any part of the landscaping section. So I think you could, if you desired, place a, you know, place a condition that the fence be installed if that property was ever to be used in a residential manner.
Any other?
Is that something you guys can?
Yeah. I mean, we don't know. I mean, chances are it wouldn't, but at least that's an obligation that the property owner was willing, well, that was required at a certain point in time if it was, because it was used in a residential context, it was a rented house. Well, it could be at some point in time, or it may not. But it seems like that obligation would go away just because there's a, a use that, a not approved use at this point.
Does that fence go along the entire eastern property line or just the portion that's kind of adjacent to where the, the buildings are?
It goes the whole way.
The whole way?
It's, it's a large
It doesn't, it does not go the whole way.
It doesn't. It goes along a whole distance in the back though, doesn't it?
Right. It goes from the northeast corner of the detention pond up along that full side of the lot, goes around the corner and up to a point that would screen off our, the existing maintenance building there. And then switched it over and provided landscaping between the two, our new building and the barn and house that are on the parcel next door.
So not down to that southeast, that, that southeast corner, it wasn't running all the way down?
Right.
Okay.
But it's still a huge length of fence.
Does that have to be put on the drawing also in order to make sure that it was treated similarly?
Yeah, we would want it updated. I think it would be good to show, yeah, the, the extent of the, well, if it's going to be deferred or, or waived.
Well, it would still need to. And have you updated your sheet to show that fence being?
Yes, I see the note. This is again on page 68 of the packet. So in place of fence not to be constructed, we were asked, we're suggesting that it be at this time and deferred to the future when the adjacent property is used as a residence. Could that be a note that you could add to your drawing? I think that the, the reason that we're stuck with the fence right now is that the A1 district can be used as residential today. So that's why we were stuck with the fence. If you wanted to state the, the note, it might be agreeable to a note stated that if this parcel to the east of ours was improved as a residential community or something like that. I mean, it's, it's not even a five acre piece. So you're not going to get a huge elderly living complex proposed there. Or even a teeny tiny site condominium with a couple houses along a private driveway. You know, the, the master plan calls for industrial business use there. So I think that's probably what's going to end up in that location down the road. But I, I think just saying if it's used in a residential purpose, then, you know, I think it's being rented out now. I don't know for sure. You know, I haven't gone over there and talked to the owners at all. But, so I think if it were tied into an improvement of a higher density or something like that.
Is the density a question? I didn't think so. It's whether it's being used as a residence.
Correct.
Which would be the trigger that we're talking about.
I don't know if it's rented right now or, or what they're using for next, or if it's their office for the, for the landscape company. I'm not sure. I just, I just don't think that it's, I just don't think it's, it's really practical anymore for us to have to build that fence.
So I just want to summarize it. It's a, there's a landscape buffer between your building and the existing
Right.
Residence.
Yeah.
And then it's the fence that picks up further on back
Right.
That provides it. So we're, we meet the landscape buffer requirements between the existing built, the existing, even if it is rented out, between that use and this use, it's just the rest of the property that is using the fence as a screen as opposed to landscaping. So if that, I mean, I could, I could go along with if it was deferred, unless the, the, the property was developed as a, as a residential use.
I'm seeing on the drawing. Are you looking at the page 68?
Yeah.
But there are two notes on there for the fence. And, and they're, it runs all the way to the front corner, back beyond the, back in the
I'm not seeing it at
Maybe I need, I'm sorry, remind me, someone else?
Yeah. Yeah. So, but yeah, but this is, the fence starts about right here. That's where I see the fence starting.
I see it here.
Yeah. But it starts, it starts right there. That's the first fence post.
So this is
Right there.
This is
This is the landscape buffer. Okay.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah. Right, there's the fence. This is the land, this is the buffer that's the landscaping in between there.
So that's the property?
Right. That's just a property line.
Okay, so here.
Here, here, here.
Okay.
Almost to the end of the property. Yeah, it stops right at, at the detention pond.
So this whole area covered by those two notes would be, what were you saying?
I would, I would say deferred.
Unless
Unless it's, it, it, the property is developed into residential use.
Until the residential, until a residential development goes adjacent or opposite to the property lines, further back.
Further back. I think you'd have to say, yeah. Any thoughts on moving there?
And the process. I mean, would be what, would you need to get the drawing updated?
Yeah, it has to go, it's supposed to go to township board. So we can
And then the board
Yeah, we could revise it before
For most of the board, we'd like to have that.
And, yeah. And so I, the intent would be, is it would be deferred unless the adjacent property was developed as a residential use. Because it is, right now, there is adequate screening between what may or may not be used as a residential use. It's just any future development.
You could say that. If you use the word future, it would
Okay.
Take anything that above and beyond what's there now.
Okay, until adjacent deferred, unless, right? Adjacent property.
Could you say that in case the vacant portion of the development is developed, vacant portion of the land is developed in a residential manner?
Okay.
Again, I would ask, would it be appropriate for them to work with you to get the drawing updated before we allow it to go to the board? You know?
Okay. I would be comfortable working with, unless you guys want to see it.
No, no. That's not what I'm suggesting. I was suggesting that you make sure
Yes, yes, yes.
Before it goes to the board.
Yeah.
Make sure we get the wording right. We can say it when we believe it should be, but
Well, we're going to put it in a motion, right?
Certainly. Ready?
Yep. All right. Are you ready for the motion? Do you want to?
I can crack at it. I think I know what you're, I didn't write down the exact words. So we'll see when I get there and our secretary will make sure that
Yeah.
Gets the combo combined. So with regard to Site Plan 19007 ET McKenzie Site Plan Amendment, based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, Plan 85 of the Site Plan, Site Plan 19007 ET McKenzie Amendment and Site Work meets the criteria for Site Plan Approval pursuant to Section 36180 of the Zoning Ordinance and recommends approval with the stipulation that the fence that is being deferred and not removed should the adjacent property to the east be developed with residential use further to the rear of its current residential buildings. That was awful.
Yeah.
I think it should be, the fence is being deferred unless the adjacent property is developed as residential.
It already is developed residential, but if there's additional development it starts getting easier. So what do you think, Chris? You think you have?
Did you get that? I, I kind of got it. It's a little, it's a little choppy, I think. Trying to make this.
And that's the property to the east, that's the line to the east?
Correct. I wasn't going to say anything about the sidewalk because that was part of the requested amendment. And we're just approving that, but
And that was submitted on the drawing, right? So we're approving that drawing?
Yes.
So that the fence shall be deferred until the adjacent easterly property is developed as residential. Is that Yeah.
And then
And then it would be automatic. Yeah.
Doug had a couple of words in there that were pretty critical. He had indicated that the vacant rear portion of the eastern parcel, you know, that was developed as indoor residential.
Okay, until the vacant rear portion of the adjacent easterly property is developed as residential. Okay.
I like those words better than ones that I use.
They're more precise. Yeah. Okay. So the fence shall be deferred until the vacant rear portion of the adjacent easterly property is developed as residential. Is until or unless?
Deferred.
Until, unless?
I think, until, I think is
Okay. All right. So is there support for the motion?
Support?
Okay, supported by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion? All right, then a roll call vote, please. Secretary Chang.
Okay. Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So is the sidewalk taken care of as well?
It was part of your request.
Yes.
Except for that, as you
All right. Thank you very much.
And it still does need to go to the township board?
Yes.
And would they need to prepare the drawing that would go to the board?
That, that note is going to have to be added. Yeah.
So one more plan update? Okay, great.
All right. All right.
And we'll be moving on to our second item of business, which is O A P D number two zero zero one, P S P number two zero zero four, Heritage Woods, the zoning two two D. For the applicant, I don't know if the applicant, I know Joe, you're here and.
I'm here. Dan should be online.
Online? Okay, we have a hybrid applicant, all right.
Well, he's, he's out of town, so we wanted to make sure one of us would be able to attend.
And promoting him to my last straight.
Thank you very much.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll hear if you'd like to sort of report on an update from some of the concerns and issues that were raised at the last one, and then we'll get any kind of update from our planning consultant and our engineers and do our deliberation.
So if you could, bro, Dan, so that he's gonna give the update and I've got some stuff on the traffic.
Yeah, he, he should be, he's, he's promoted.
What page number? It starts on page sixty-nine, I believe, of the, sixty-nine. Is that correct?
No, that's still ET McKenzie.
Oops, sorry. I, I separated mine out, so.
Well, actually.
What number is that?
It does start, Heritage Woods does start at page sixty-nine of the pack.
Doris McCloud?
Yeah, so it's the first one is, yeah, the first page is, it's the application and it says insight.
Yeah.
LLC. Yeah, that's the beginning of this one.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, Dan, Dan is, he's on, is.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair Commissioners, good evening and thank you again for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm coming from you from a long way away, so I'm glad the communications are that loud in this virtual world. My name is Daniel Johnson, the applicant, and we're here this evening. We have Joe Maynard in the audience as you can, as you're looking at him, and Ted Erickson is online. He has needed to engineer, two of our engineers on the project. They would be available to answer it, address any questions you may have this evening as well. So tonight, our presentation is focused on the follow-up meetings from the January twenty-fourth, follow-up items from the January twenty-fourth meeting, our last meeting. And in your packet, you've got, at least with respect to this meeting, a cover letter and the copies of the PowerPoint that starts in a minute, so. With that, brief introduction, I'd like to move to shot, screen sharing and kind of walking through the updates that we got. Okay, so once again, Heritage Woods Village is planned senior residential community. This is our third meeting with this planning commission and this presentation is focused up on the re, on the follow-up review items from our last meeting on January twenty-fourth. So the items of discussion have, again, have to do with the MDOT entrance and service drive, specifically with the oversized vehicles that were discussed at the last meeting. Number two, an update on the Eagle public notification status. Number three, clarifications and discussion about the public path benefits. Number four, environmental sustainability initiative summary, and then following with, again, a restatement of community benefits and some closing remarks. So just for reference, this is the concept plan. Basically, it's exactly as you have seen it. It was submitted in December and reviewed in January. The only slight variation is in the, is in the median entrance here, and we'll get to the detail of that momentarily with respect to the discussions with, with MDOT. Once again, as we discussed at our last meeting, this was the MDOT approved entrance plan that they approved last December, December of last year. And again, as we covered in our last meeting, some photos of that, existing photos of that area context. Here, you're looking south down to, down the service drive, which is owned by MDOT, it's on MDOT property. Three residential homes there have the root right to use that by some sort of constructive use in a century. So with respect to the update specifically in terms of what's transpired, what was discussed at the last meeting was the comment by Mr. Spicer that he was intending to purchase a forty-foot tag-along trailer in the future and was concerned about being able to maneuver that into his, into his property. And the other discussion item was fire, fire vehicle access, which we had covered earlier, but. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Joe, who'll kind of walk you through this. What we did is put together some turning templates for the various size vehicles involved, and Joe can walk you through the specifics of the geometrics of this, of this, of these two diagrams.
So I also printed out some eleven-by-seventeen drawings if you guys want something more than. Anybody else does? I thought it might make it a little easier to see. The same drawings that are in the, on the screen, just printed a little bit larger.
Would you have a property that you can give to the residents?
I don't know. I didn't realize how many people were here, so.
You can share them.
If you can, yeah. So I want to kind of take you through the thinking on, on this project a little bit, kind of where we started and how we got to this point. As, as Dan pointed out, you know, this, this area is owned by MDOT. They own the service drive. They own all the rights to and what we can and can't do on this intersection.
Just so we're clear about that, the service drive is not what you're showing.
Right, the service drive is the drive that's.
That would be your last, your last page, right?
Yeah, if you go to the last page.
It's new shown up.
This driveway, which is the residence where they access their homes from.
Gotcha.
Right away is right here. So everything to the east is owned by MDOT. Everything to the west is owned by the residents. So we're a little hindered by MDOT's rules for safety and design standards on how we can handle this intersection. And while we understand that, you know, there could be a truck and trailer entering the property, the big concern is if that truck were to go in and try to make a left turn and there's somebody else sitting there trying to make a left turn out, you end up with a conflict and you end up with cars possibly even sitting in the intersection until somebody moves. That's why MDOT has the standard for left turns, and you see this all along Jackson Road. If you think about the intersection of Zeeb and Jackson, and as you're headed west, you go down, you make a left at Meyer. Now, if you could imagine if that light were closer to the intersection, how many cars would stack up before they're back into the intersection? So MDOT has guidelines that tell you how far a left turn should be from a signalized intersection. And that's what we show basically on this plan, is from the intersection to the left turn, what's the safest distance for a large vehicle, and they designed it around a semi-truck, a fifty-foot trailer, how far that distance could be in order to make a safe left turn and not impact the intersection. We did discuss with them, which is not normal, about having the smaller turnaround for a car, which they allowed us to keep so that anybody driving in with a car, pickup truck, or anything like that could make a sharp left as they get into the project and then turn down the residential driveways. And then, well, you'll see, we, we modeled it with, with a truck and a forty-foot trailer, which also meets a fifty-foot truck and trailer as it would on Jackson Road. Going a little further, Dan has another slide coming up. I don't know if you can flip to it, but we, in the future development of any of the parcels either south or north, MDOT would not allow the use of this service drive for a commercial drive approach to that highway commercial area that they're kind of looking at possibly selling. The only way to do it, just like with Myers, is to come in further and make a safe, safe left or right turn. That's why we've also set this up that way, is to allow that future development to take place. One thing Dan will go into is, in the master deed, there'll be bylaws written on how that can be accomplished so that we guarantee later on that, should these developments happen, that there'll be rights to access and how that rights would be worked out. So that we're also considering future developments as well. So I'll say, while this is not ideal, it's basically what MDOT's telling us we need to do.
A question about the MDOT rules, and that is, as it exists now, would they allow access on that service drive for a commercial property? I'm, I'm just wondering what the MDOT guidelines are. I mean, is, is that an issue even now with the development of that property?
So if that development were to come in first versus this one? To the truth, I don't know the answer to that one, because we didn't actually ask them about that, because I can't imagine it being a safe intersection for backups, but that would be something that would have to be discussed with them. I don't know, Dan, have you had talked to them about that item specifically?
No, not specifically. What we covered with them was our meeting of February first, we went through basically the large vehicle considerations. We focused our conversations on that. Just to back up a little bit, if, Joe, if I might, a couple of points here. If you, if you look at the dimensions of this, this particular turnaround, it's, it's very similar to the, what you would find on Jackson Road in terms of dimensional characteristics. So if you put that into context, you know, that's what we're talking about in a real-world situation. And this is just an enlargement of the other area demonstrating the turning movements of the vehicles that Joe described. To kind of summarize, what we're talking about here is the, we, we're providing for the oversized vehicle access through the MDOT service drive. We've, as we discussed at the last meeting, there were some drainage issues that were brought up by Mr. Cat, and after a field investigation, I think we understand what most of those were related to and would address those during the final engineering process. And part of this process would be to prevent an access ease, ease into the MDOT service drive and the service drive neighbors, you know, in the vicinity of the intersection. And then, as a follow-up to our meeting, we did, were able to arrange a coordination call with MDOT. On February first, we reviewed all of the above and we received their, with their concurrence, and we received an email from them, I believe. The planning staff and engineers were copied on that communication in mid-February. Going to future planning considerations, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Cat, we were earlier this month to talk about the situation. We're not here to throw stones at the neighbors. We were talking about, you know, what the practical realities of, of a situation like this. MDOT controls the intersection. They're, they have rules that they have to follow with the Federal Highway Administration because of where their funding comes from. And their, their mandate is traffic safety. But with respect to future uses, what I described to Mr. Cat was that this is a private road. It's not like Jackson Road. This is a private road funded by private dollars. It has requirements like any condominium association for maintenance, snow removal, lighting, landscaping, insurance, et cetera, and then, so if a, if a private party is gonna, you know, use this, they would have to be, agree to, you know, to be a part of that maintenance agreement, would have to be part of the deal, and a license agreement. This, you know, road would be serving the association, of which there are many other members, the duplex owners to the west and the senior housing to the, to the west and the balance of the project. So it's, it's, it's a little bit unusual in that you have a private. It's just different, it's different certainly from Jackson Road, where you have a public right of, so. Still have to respect the rights of the property owner and the, and the issues associated with the ongoing, you know, maintenance of the road, et cetera, and operation of the road. So as Joe, as Joe mentioned, you know, we would structure in the, in the master deed provisions for the future, for future owners that are unrelated to the project, whether they be north or south, to access this road, you know, through a license agreement, through a maintenance agreement. And, you know, the, you know, how that, how that's accounted for probably relates to, you know, the traffic associated with whatever those projects may be or uses may be in the future. You know, I think that from our perspective and from MDOT's perspective, they've been, you know, cooperative. This all started with, you know, the road commission not, would not really allow for a right-in, right-out, or would not allow for a left-hand turn in this vicinity, so. As some of you may recall from the prior planning commission, we actually had to remove to put this parcel under contract in order to accomplish this objective, you know, to basically keep all the truck, project traffic off of Marshall Road, which was a big deal to the road. It's got a long history. It's been a, excuse me, about an eighteen, eighteen-month process with multiple agencies, and we certainly appreciate the neighbors' concerns. We've addressed those with the oversized vehicles. And it's, this is probably the best we're gonna do on this. I'm gonna move on to the next topic unless you want to focus on questions on this one.
Yeah, I think we do have a, a question. Commissioner Hyde?
I do have a question, sir. Could you go up, back up a sheet two? Oh, there we go. No, there we go. If you could zoom in on the intersection between the Boulevard and the Service Drive, is that depicting a truck pulling out of the Service Drive? Well, I can see one coming from the left and going south, going south, is, is entering the Service Drive, but you also show, I believe, a truck going north and making a U-turn onto Baker Road and going south on Baker. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Hyde, I'll let Joe respond here.
Sure.
Yes, that is correct.
And is there a divider that's in hash marks? Is why I wanted that one blown up so that the people.
That hash mark divider is actually painted lines, like you would normally see, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and my criteria for that was, could that truck and trailer exit without entering into the left turn lane and without hindering oncoming traffic? Obviously, the light would be there, but they can safely make a turn out and enter even the right lane.
So that is, that it has which would you're after, and then they can turn a right turn out of the Boulevard?
Correct.
Is it, and now I see that without a divider there, is there any reason why they couldn't enter the left turn and make a left turn onto Baker Road? Is that being precluded?
No, that is not precluded, no. That's why it's painted.
So they could drive into the left turn lane and wait for the light, and when it's green, they could make a left turn going north on Baker Road?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I was thinking there was still a divider there.
I just.
There's a one further that keeps incoming and exiting from the Boulevard.
Correct, yes, that is the divided Boulevard portion, yes.
One other minor detail, that there was a. One other minor detail, that there was a truck, what's referred to as a truck apron, added to that inside radius on the south side of the intersection, was Joe can point out as well.
What is a truck apron? Oh, for the rear wheels to ride underneath without getting dirt.
Correct, yes.
One last question I had here was if... Is this the way that we communicate with MDOT? And that is through the developer only? And in this case, there are other users of this intersection that were not even included with MDOT. And they're sitting here and they're asking a lot of questions because they weren't involved. But that's not the usual communication that MDOT does? I kind of know what you're going to be doing.
Juan, can you probably have a little more background? I mean, my experience has typically been the developers that have had the conversations with MDOT, but I don't know why...
This is a pretty unusual situation.
Yeah. It would have been nice if, like in a public hearing, the public could have had input while decisions remain made or before, rather than... And in fact, you have taken them into account and run with it. And that's... It looks to me like you've addressed a lot of the issues, but...
I do have one additional question, and that is, I think some of the concerns is someone coming out of the service drive and, you know, if it's... I don't know what the stacking was, you know, at a certain time. I mean, one, it would be, you know, somebody being polite and letting them in ahead. The other thing would be a way of keeping that drive clear, either, you know, having stop bars, you know, before you hit that service drive, so that somebody coming into the service drive could actually...
Stop here for the light.
Yeah. Would be able to, you know, turn and stop at the light. I don't know if something like that would be...
That would be in our traffic model from the traffic engineer. Dan, I don't know if you know if they updated that part of the traffic model to show turns in and out of this area?
No, I think MDOT's concern was, you know, there's a distance requirement from the, to the traffic signal viewing thing, which was a criteria. We discussed it on our call, and my recollection is that they felt that what's being proposed for the minimum amount of traffic associated with the service drive would be, in their world, not a big deal.
It works a little different than our world. Do you usually meet with MDOT? Have you been doing it virtually?
Yes.
Okay, so are you saying that with the traffic model, the distance, if you stop the traffic to clear before they hit the service drive, that the distance between where the traffic is stopped in the light is too far, according to MDOT standards?
It was a concern. I don't recall exactly the specifics on the dimension. Commissioner Colvinson? But it was one of their concerns. Because we asked the same question.
Yeah, so I see kind of two MDOT-related questions. One is their standards on access, if those properties were developed, direct access from Baker Road or using the service drive to access a commercial enterprise, that being an outstanding question. And then the whole idea of giving the service drive priority for exiting. Okay, any other questions around the MDOT piece?
I think we've covered it right there with summary.
I have some questions, but not related to them.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, go on to the next piece.
Thank you. So again, that summarized, we just went through that. So briefly on the Eagle process we discussed last time, this will be very good. The following meeting on the 28th, we did receive a communication from them on February 3rd, which included a revised draft permit. You can see the heading of that here. The next process, basically the process involves providing comments to them on that draft, which our consultants did the following week. And at this point, it's in their court. We understood that there will be a call, so we did this week to kind of go through those. Once that was finalized, and they would issue the public notice, and copies of that would be posted at the township, and the public notice would be on the Eagle website. So we likely, will now not commence in February, but it will likely commence in March. And Ted, actually, if you could allow Ted Erickson into the call, he could perhaps give us any further update to... Might have come in since we last spoke.
And just, the Eagle permit is for the community septic, because that's...
Yeah, community wastewater utility system, correct.
Okay.
Which is a parallel, which is a parallel permit associated with this project.
And Ted Erickson is a panelist now, so if he'd like to address us, feel free.
Good evening. I don't have any additional information other than what Dan said about the permit process. The public notice period will be 30 days, and that will begin after they, after we agree to the draft, which as Dan indicated, would be a couple of weeks.
So as I said, that was a very brief update. Any questions on that?
Any questions, commissioners? All right, on to the next one.
So, next topic, public pathway. We just discussed this slide at the last meeting. There's a couple of different options within the master plan showing the potential pathway routings, and we talked about that. Inserted this into tonight's presentation just to, for clarity's sake. So on the plans that we submitted in December, there was some proposed routing for the pathway. And it more or less complemented or could complement what you saw in the previous two images. So we had a north-south route that basically paralleled more or less our east property line. And then you have an east-west route that would be on the north side of the Boulevard entrance. So after further discussions, it seemed that we would propose, or at least as a suggestion, the pathway part that's on the property, we would construct the pathway, provide the easement, provide for the maintenance. And in that yellow line that's indicated there, the dash-yellow line again could be a future easement if and when, and whatever happens with the bridge across interstate name. And then, in addition to that suggestion, as I'll put it, we saw this last photograph of Baker Road for context. So what we are talking about is dedicated easement for all the pathway routing I just described on the site plan. We would construct the pathway on the project property. We would further provide a monetary contribution through an SAD or other method to be proportioned consistent with other PUD present projects in the township in subject of future development agreement. And finally, we would, I think, coordinate with TAP as part of the final PUD process to finalize whatever form, shape, this would take. So I think that's, from our perspective, how we would have proposed approaching this. And clearly, we have not had any direct contact with TAP on this, but would certainly be willing to do so as part of a final PUD process. So before I move on, any questions on this topic?
Commissioner Hyde?
Yeah, and it's a question for you, Chair. Is that the appropriate point of contact would be an advisory panel rather than a board of trustees themselves as the final approval?
Because they are a recommending body that's looking at the coordination, like with Dexter and other places, that would be appropriate? Yeah. Any other questions on the pathway piece? Okay. Next item.
So moving then on to the discussion about the environmental sustainability initiative. Just to reiterate what the project has been proposing, stormwater best management practices, which we indicated to the prior planning commission, provide for EV charging for each duplex and villa unit, which would mean that's 231 provisions for the garages in each one of those units. In addition to that, we would do some around the senior living facility relative to staff and visitors, et cetera. Provide for LEED certification for the duplex villa units, including but not limited to the following. And that would all be part of a LEED process. And with respect to the E V star appliances, we would also propose the all-electric with respect to the appliances. And then finally, as we indicated at our initial meeting, we provide an area for a future solar farm. Now, we didn't talk about that too much. We want to provide a little more color in terms of what that potentially could mean, with some caveats. So again, as we referenced in our early January meeting, we've done some consulting with Homeland Solar in our... And what you see in this little image is an excerpt from the site plan at the north side of the property. So you see those blue lines would be the potential for a ground-milled solar system with optimum tilt and orientation for solar production. It's roughly two acres. And as I'll see in the next slide, there are legislation constraints favoring franchise utilities, electric utilities, in this case, DTE. So some of the, again, this is all preliminary, but some of the legal considerations, not to get too far on the weeds here, is that only utilities can sell electricity across property. So that's, you know, because we'll have multiple ownership entities on the project, whether it's the duplex units, or whether it's the senior living facility, or whether it's the community wastewater utility system, or whether it's ranch villas that would be leased. Because those are, there's multiple ownership entities potentially across the project. Now, according to Homeland Solar, there is a community solar bill, which is currently being considered in Lansing, which potentially could address this limitation. So that's a future thing that would influence how we would approach this. There is a potential to perhaps break that grid up into smaller pieces and maybe get around some of that, some of that issue, those issues, which is something we'd certainly look at closer. And some other large-capacity options, which could be negotiated with DTE. So basically, I think this is preliminary in terms of what could happen. You're trying to communicate some of the legal considerations that go on with this approach. And then just again, a real quick look at what the potentially, potential load elements are and the size of the potential solar field, which is just over one, roughly over one megawatt. So again, if you look at that and how you might correlate that to one more or multiple elements in the project, starting to look at those kinds of things. Again, we see this as something to, we're excited about doing, but feel that the details of that would come out probably at the next step of details for a final PUD process in terms of what makes sense in the context of all the considerations we just described. So the other topic that came up just real briefly in our last meeting, and we didn't really have a chance to discuss it to any great degree, is the topic of all-electric. So what we did discuss, or I think what was mentioned briefly, was that natural gas would be required for any emergency generators on the project, life safety systems associated with the senior living facility, or for utility equipment operation backup power requirements for the wastewater system. So there will be natural gas on the property because of code requirements, unless some technology comes along that changes that. At least for foreseeable future, that's a given. So the next, so the all-electric implies, at least from our perspective, implies the use of electric heat pump technology for HVAC systems. That, heat pumps in cold weather climates, some of you may or may not know it, not always perform well without the select resistance. And electrical resistance is expensive. So a concern for unintended consequences and utility bills for senior residents on fixed incomes is something that is a concern for us, not directly, but indirectly for the future. But now, having said all that, heat pump technology improvements are evolving, and we'll share a couple of things with you on that. And then renewable natural gas is an emerging technology which could influence future sustainability initiatives. And we'll share a couple of things on that as well. And these are inserted into your package, so bear with us. So just briefly on this topic, the whole climate heat pump considerations are basically somewhat illustrated by this map of the US. As the farther the south you are, the more effective they are. Farther the north you are, particularly in the wintertime, maybe not so much. Now, again, the technology is changing, but it's still a reality. I think further evidenced by... Part of Energy recently created a challenge to accelerate the climate key pump technologies, and they refer to that as CCHV. So this is clearly a developing, evolving technology. And we think it's worth more consideration. We're certainly open to looking at that in the future. But at this point in time, we have concerns about getting to an electric project for the reasons I mentioned. Then, in addition to that, you know, Michigan has just enacted a law last year, late last year, Public Act 87, which introduced the need to investigate further a study for the Michigan's renewable natural gas industry. They commissioned a think-tank group out of New York, or excuse me, to Washington, DC, which, this is a cover slide from their recent study that they produced in January. So as a, as a, as an alternative to natural natural gas, you've got renewable natural gas, which is finally a niche. The reason for this, I think, is twofold. One, you have a lot of naturally occurring methanes, if you will, from products, whether it's landfills, whether it's dairy operations, whether it's livestock operations, whether it's biomass. All of these things have off-gassing into the environment, primarily methane, which is a greenhouse gas. So I think the state is trying to look for ways to capture that in addition to capturing it and eliminating it from an environmental perspective, although looking at it as an economic development tool as well. So it's never going to be a huge, huge as the natural gas shortage right now, but it certainly could have a positive impact going forward. Now, with respect to the same topic, there, this is December last year. There were four of these projects that were announced, and these are associated with dairy farms in mid-state Michigan. And I find it interesting that this, there are a lot of companies gravitating for this. Actually, there was an article in the Lansing Journal yesterday, late last week, where City of Lansing basically just started to do a renewable natural gas facility for their landfill operation. And DTE also has a program for biomass. So this is also something in the arsenal of environmental considerations, which were tempered ones of you of natural gas. Do you want to discuss this topic before we move on?
Yeah, let's do that. Are there questions from the commissioners? Yeah, questions or more?
So with regard to the EV charging stations, do you know which kind of charging station would be put in?
Well, with respect to the individual garage, what typically occurred there would be the installation of a large-capacity three-prong plug that would be adaptable or used by individual electric vehicles that come with their own connection. So basically, you're wiring it, you're wiring the garages for EVs.
From my understanding, that there are maybe three different in the development... of the EV stations or EV charging capability, and they range in terms of how much or how quickly, how much and how quickly the charging takes. So do you know which ones you're proposing to put into your garage?
Yeah, well, I think, I think with respect to the, the individual garages, it would be the kind that you could do overnight. So it's not, it's not a quick, quick charging one. With respect to the units around, with respect to the units around the senior living facility, it would be more of a quicker charge type, which probably in the type two category, I believe it's called, that would could be used by visitors or by staff or by, you know, any residents it might be, independent nature.
So why not type three?
Well, that's, are those the supercharging type, the fast type?
Yes.
Well, if you're, if you're parking your car overnight in your garage, then would there be a need for fast type?
Well, somebody might use their car a couple of times a day, but anyway, I'll move on.
There's a, there'd be a range, a range used on the project.
So for instance, let's say there are tornadoes and people are expected to move. If your vehicle is not charged, you couldn't go anywhere because it would take 24 hours to charge.
Did you have another question?
Yeah, I don't know if this is the right moment, but I noticed in the packet we received this stuff from the DEQ, and it had multiple pages, I think of 22 pages of water well and pump record. How is that related to your project? I think it's the existing wells for each of the properties.
Those are the test wells from the environmental study.
Okay, okay.
I had a quick question.
Yeah, Commissioner.
It had to do with the property lines that we're talking about, the selling electricity across property lines. Is, are we're talking individual lots could not receive the solar power because they're privately owned? Is that what the property lines are talking, we're not talking the property line on the whole development.
Well. Go ahead, Daniel. Mr. Hyde, thank you again for the question. So, you know, we, on our, that's one thing that would have to be, you know, part of, part of clarification, because you had, you will have separate parcels, tax parcels for every duplex unit, of which there are 82. You have a separate tax parcel for the parcel that contains the four leased villa units. You will have a separate tax parcel for the senior living facility. You more than likely have a separate tax parcel, where there would be one associated with the community wastewater utility system. So, yeah, but it's, again, these are all going to be topics to be worked through in terms of our analysis of this, and in conjunction with the master deed for a site condominium project. But, but to directly answer your question, if you look at the franchise rules for Detroit, Edison, Consumers Energy, or any other utility, typically, private person's not allowed to sell electricity across property lines because it would basically create an issue for the franchise.
I have a follow-up question if you're done.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Hyde, so with regard to the solar, I guess I had, the solar farm would be selling energy to the residents?
Well, it would be servicing the project, and it would basically have the, and we're happy to, again, we thought we would get into this in much more detail in the final PUD, but you're allowed, it would basically go back to the grid, but you get a reduction in your rate, the way it works.
So, okay, let's assume that's the system. So everybody in the, in the prod, in the complex would be, get the benefit of that. It wouldn't be that you would be selling energy to them.
So back to the utility and then split the, the rate reduction among the homeowners association.
So the cell would be not across the, each property owner's lines, but rather the cell would be across to DET.
And then have an agreement, then split the proceeds.
And, and this is sort of a, it is evolving too. And the, I mean, the other thing that could happen is if, if Ann Arbor does go ahead with their sustainable energy utility, this could actually be part of that, and it would be on a separate grid totally from, from.
Separate what?
A separate grid from DTE. They would, it would be a parallel utility. So, I mean, it, there are all sorts of things that are out there right now, but the fact is, we have a mega, a potential of a megawatt of generation without the rooftops in, in this scenario. And, I don't know, it, yeah, we'll, we'll see how, you know, the legislation evolves around it, but.
Right, but is it possible that they could propose that in their bylaws, they take into account the savings that would be generated by this, and not have to have it metered by everybody, but just have it be, you know, have an agreement that we split it out?
I think, yeah, I, I don't, unknown at this point, yeah. I, I think there's a lot to work out, how it is. And, and, Dan, also, there are, DTE is working with at least one other local development around a microgrid, and that's Veridian.
Yes, certainly.
And it, I, you know, we'll see where that goes, and if they would be interested in, you know, working with any other developments. Because this is, you know, of a scale that they might have interest in it. They're also very interested in pursuing research around emergency backup. And I, I agree with you right now, natural gas or, you know, propane or diesel or whatever for, you're in the fossil fuels right now for emergency generators. It's, it's really difficult. It, yeah, it, it's not really feasible at this point to do the, the emergency generators that are required for the wastewater and, and the life safety out of solar at this point. So I agree with you there.
Just one last, so the reason that we wanted to introduce this was because of the nature of the PUD, we want to really, you know, indicate the location on the site plan for this function to occur, recognizing, of course, that there are a lot of details we worked out, but at least it's a space over, if you will, because of the site plan nature of the zoning in this, in this particular situation.
A couple things on some of the other sustainable elements. I, I don't want to, do you have any questions?
Go right now.
Okay. And, and that is, because of the senior living facility, I know you've talked about the lead certification of, of the homes, and, but I haven't heard anything about the senior living facility, or certain energy standards that you'd want to meet that would be above code. Can you talk about that a little bit more?
Well, I can do it to a certain extent. You know, conceptually, that, that element would be a, potentially have a, another, there would be another ownership, operational ownership involved in that. And we'd like to be flexible in terms of what, recognizing, of course, our overall environmental sustainability objectives and goals, and communicating that, and certainly in their benefit to, to pursue lead certification to the extent of the effects of operating costs.
And I guess.
Do that, so.
Yeah, I'm not so much a fan of lead certification as a, a performance certification, so that you, you actually design to a specific energy goal. I think, you know, that, in, in my mind, where we're at in this point in time, it's, it's about the, the energy use and the reduction of the energy use, which also ties into, then you have the viability of going with a heat pump if you already have an efficient building. The other thing, and I know this gets into, because you're dealing with another ownership, but there are, because this is a larger complex, you have the opportunity to do, one, you have your community wastewater, they have geo systems that actually use the energy from the wastewater as an, as an option. So you're not, you know, you're then using more of a heat exchange, heat pump with a constant temperature. The other thing that this development could also do is do its own geo utility. So you're of a scale, the issue would be, how do you do that with the, you know, you'd need the senior living facility, that's, that's going to be your, that's your major energy source right there, you know, for either wastewater or that geo exchange. I mean, that could really, I mean, you could really, because the, a lot of developments don't do geo exchange because it's a little more expensive than the coal climate heat pumps, but it's totally reliable in that, in that sense. You know, you, you don't have to have any kind of electric.
Yeah, you know, clearly, we're on board with trying to do the right thing, and we're going to be open, and certainly open-minded to exploring all options. We just think that exploration process should occur in a final PUD, not in a preliminary PUD timeframe.
So like as you're working on it?
Yeah.
But, yeah, yeah, you know, we, we really have, you know, we have, and certainly will, but we just have, you know, we have, we need to have our, we need to be in a position where we can be serious about doing that at this point. We, we've been, as I think I mentioned in January, this is the two-year anniversary of our first meeting on this project township, not public meeting, but introductory meeting. And so we're, you know, we're anxious to move forward, we have a lot of work to do, but we need to take, we need to get to first base, which is permanent PUD with the planning commission in order to do that.
Any other questions on the sustainability pieces? All right.
Is that the end of the discussion?
Not quite, not quite. If I could just close out with, just to kind of resummarize the community benefits and some closing comments, this will be very brief, so bear with me. So the master plan you recently adopted, you guys are familiar with that, you took, also part of it, you all voted to adopt it. And since we're talking about a PUD, this, these are, this is an excerpt from that document, and it has seven points here that address goals within the PUD project. Now, I think we've touched on all of these to one extent or another in terms of how we've tried to put the project together. And I'm not going to dwell on all of these, but there are elements of the project that touch all of these to some degree or another. And then just to briefly summarize these benefits, and we did this in our initial meeting in January. So again, the project starts, starts and stops with only housing and facilitating agent-in-place opportunities, which is really what this is about. Open space preservation standpoint, 61 acres. We have dedicated land conservation areas. We have tried to maintain the rural character of Marshall Road, preserve the farmhouse, deserve an area law marshal road for agricultural use. One-story, primarily one-story cluster-type housing on the project, 100-foot offer. We've talked about the public pathway system, there's elements of reforestation along the freeway. We've talked about BNP's from the start of our presentations to planning commissions. You know, the, you know, the other related benefits, of course, are permanent jobs at the senior living facility and construction jobs, you know, not unlike the company that you just reviewed, ET McKenzie, that would be the type of company that would potentially work on this project. And then, of course, the local community tax base, which in this case would be significant for a project of this size. And then finally, in terms of the sort of the big, the big community benefits that have been emphasized to us, and this is, you know, similar to what you were involved with the Woodley Commons, is the focus on the public use pathway connections. There would be a consideration for the utility water system in terms of the study that OHMA would pursue in the future and describing what that need might be, and there would be a contribution towards that. And then likewise, for the emergency services within the township. All of these, of course, will be detailed in a, in the development agreement, similar to Woodley Commons. So just in brief closing, this project is about senior housing. And we described a, you know, the demographic implication, the work study in our initial meeting. Now, in, in 2030, 25, about 25% of the US population is going to be over 65. That's a real, that's an emergency in itself. You know, your, your master plan contains demographics and SEMCOG, which, which basically reinforces that point. And then, as we mentioned, we had a local market demand study done for, for the area within a nine-mile radius of the site, and it encouraged, it basically confirmed everything that we're talking about this project. And then lastly, your master plan encourages community goal at the senior housing. And then with respect to density, which was a discussion earlier on in terms of previous planning commission, and to a certain degree in January, the density that we're proposing would compare very favorably to, number one, as a right parallel plan, which had large single-family lots, had an office building on Marshall Road, had the hotel line on Baker Road. So all of that density was almost twice as much as what we're proposing, twice as much from a population standpoint, twice as much from a traffic standpoint, and all the traffic on Marshall Road. And that would have been as a rate. It would be less than the other senior projects in the area, which we described in some detail, including one that you approved in the Woodley Commons document. And it would be less than the MR3 zoning category, which was relative to the recently adopted plan. That's about one-third of what that would be. So we think we've, we think we've affirmed the township goals, and we would respectfully request the opportunity to move to a final PUD process. Again, thank you for your service, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. This is the one, do you have?
Thank you. I, I will be here tonight primarily to help answer any questions that the planning commission might have. I think we've provided several reviews of the project as this has been presented over time. We did provide a February 22 memorandum that has some, a summary of what the applicant has just gone over. We do note a few items that we need clarification on, but the more I look at those, frankly, those are final PUDs, final site plan issues. I think what the planning commission and ultimately the township board, and by the way, just for those here tonight and those watching online, the planning commission is a recommending body only for this project. And so regardless of what the planning commission does this evening, whether it's a recommendation of approval, a recommendation of denial, or a recommendation of approval with conditions, it will go on to the township board. Doesn't, even if it's a full recommendation of denial by the planning commission, that recommendation will go on to the township board. It doesn't stop here tonight. It will go on to a township board agenda. So I can help try to answer any questions the planning commission might have, but really what the planning commission is faced with this evening is to try to determine if this project meets the PUD criteria and the PUD standards that would allow this project to move forward so that the applicant could submit this in a final PUD stage, which essentially would be a final detailed site plan with detailed engineering, all floor plans, elevations, and all of the detail, and including detail with regards to some of the items discussed tonight. A little more, a little more time to discuss the items like the solar. A little more, a little more time to discuss the items like the solar farm and, and other building, you know, energy saving facilities and things like that. But those are all more of a detailed nature that we would, you know, dig into in a lot more detail at the next stage of review. So really what the planning commission is again, looking at is, does this project warrant moving forward as a plan of development based on the information provided by the applicant? So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Chairperson Collerson.
So I have some questions. So your initial, my understanding from the prior planning commission is they had some concerns about the level of high density of the project and that the amount of units was reduced. And then after we approved the master plan, I see the amount of units as have increased. So the senior building, senior facility building, instead of ninety two units, it's up to a hundred and twenty. Did I get that right?
Yes, I guess.
I think that's correct.
That's, that's correct from our perspective.
Okay. And then you have another hundred and forty nine. Now, this is, I'm looking at paperwork I took notes from, from 2019 when you were in front of the former planning commission and had concerns about the density. But back in 2019, you had a hundred and ninety, a hundred and forty nine attached residential units. Are we still at a hundred and forty nine?
That, that one, that one forty nine refers to the villas for lease and that number has not changed, it's still the same.
Okay. And then there's, so there's a hundred and forty nine. And then you also had back in ninety, twenty nineteen, you had eighty two duplex units. Has that number changed?
No, that's the same. It actually during the course of the work with the prior planning commission, that number used to be higher, but it came down about eight units or something like that. Two, eighty, eighty two is the current number in conjunction. So that's the correct number.
Okay. So I'm just.
Did you want to ask what was the purpose of the increase in the senior living? Why they?
Well, not right now. So now I'm at three hundred and fifty one units. Is that?
Correct.
That makes sense to you? Okay. So in reading the materials from 2019, I noticed that the, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir. The, the hundred and forty nine attached residential units and maybe even the eighty two duplex units were targeted for age fifty five and older. Did I get that right?
You did, correct.
Okay, all right. But as I understood the paperwork, it could be sold to younger people. In other words, you would not exclude younger people from buying those units. You could not exclude or you would not, or whatever the proper term is.
Yeah, I mean, if, to give you a simple example, let's say you had a, a couple that was married. One was, one was fifty five and one was fifty. We're not going to exclude the spouse, to give you a brief example.
Okay. But I mean, other, outside of that, I mean, a person, you say it was a couple that were forty or a couple that was thirty five, it's quite conceivable that they could purchase those units. Is that correct?
We're not targeting it to younger people and it would be inconsistent with the, the goal of the project.
But it would not be impossible.
And it could be resold.
So I picked, I can't remember where I saw that in the 2019 paperwork that I was provided back in 2020 or early 2021, but it, it did say that it was targeted for fifty five and older. But it also had to qualify that, of course, it couldn't be guaranteed that the buyer would be fifty five and older. I thought I read that in the earlier paperwork.
It's not a restricted community for fifty five and older, is, is, is I think that.
By law, is that even possible?
Right. Okay.
No, okay, that's question, by law, is it even allowed?
Well, it's not my area of law, but I think you might be running this problem.
Yeah. I don't think by law, I don't know. I don't think by law it's getting promoted. But anyway, that's not the point.
So, and your project is a community wastewater treatment. And then the water would be part of the Jackson Road water system?
Yeah, it's, it's part of the city of Ann Arbor water system that the township, you know, has a relationship with, you know, correct.
Okay. And I'm kind of curious, if you knew that the former planning commission was concerned about the density and you lowered the numbers and then now you're coming forward with a project that has gone from ninety two, I think it was ninety two units in your senior. It was, I think it was a second floor, not a three story, but a two story at ninety two units. Now we're up to a hundred and twenty units on third floor. You give me some background as to why?
Sure, yeah, yeah. So that's, what you're talking about is a net change of twenty eight units in the context of three hundred and one. And the reason for the change, if we tried to explain it, maybe it didn't do a good job, is that in the intervening timeframe, we had commissioned a demand use study that was focused, targeted specifically on this location. I think to the nine mile radius. They took into account, you know, the specifics of the market. That market study indicated that the hundred and twenty units was the, was sort of the sweet spot, not only from a demand standpoint, but also from an operational standpoint in terms of the senior facility itself. In other words, you have staff, you have, you know, you have equipment, you have all sorts of things that go on with operating a facility like that in hundred and twenty is a more efficient operational model than, than the ninety two.
Than the ninety two. And so to understand what that means, the sweet spot. What does that, how is that defined? I mean, the sweet spot.
I guess, I guess it's focused on the operational aspects of it. Which is my intent in terms of, I think we mentioned.
Okay. So the sweet spot is that you can get that many more units in with that amount of?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's more of a staff efficient operation as opposed to.
Right. Okay. So that's, that's, okay. Just so that I know, that's, so the sweet spot isn't necessarily for the community, but rather you can get that many more units in given that level of staff.
Although I would say that that also reflects how much it costs to be in that facility. Because if you have a, a facility that doesn't take full advantage of the staffing models, it will cost the residents a lot more to be there because the staffing cost for that facility will be high. I mean, that's, yeah, that's, that's a, and that is a real, your biggest cost is, is staff.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
And those are the only questions I have. But I do have a comment if you want me to do that now or I can wait till after everybody else has a chance to.
You could speak, go for it.
So I voted against this project at our last meeting. And it was brought to my attention that the master plan passed unanimously. And I just want to correct the record, the master plan did not pass unanimously. It passed with one abstention. But I did vote for the master plan, even knowing that we were changing to allow for this project and its density. Because I believed in the senior citizen aspect of it. But what I didn't expect is that the units would increase and that we could work on lowering the density of this project. And it appears to me from the conversation and maybe even the remarks of other commissioners, that that, nobody's really, that's not a concern of anybody but me. And the reason that as a commissioner, that it's a concern is and you've heard this, not you, I don't mean you in general, I mean, people in the meetings at various times have heard this need to keep our community as rural in the nature in which we have all enjoyed it. And while I appreciate that people have an invested interest in this project for many reasons, and one of which is the, the age of the policy for aging residents of the township. Now, but we're not, we're not assured that residents of the township will be getting these units. So there's a lot of speculation on this. But, but anyway, I voted for the master plan despite my despite my reservation, because I thought that there would be some room to reduce this project in line with the prior commission's concerns. I see that's not on the table, but I did want to address that. You know, Mr. Luan brought that up at one of the prior meetings. So my bad, obviously I made a mistake because without the change, the changes in the master plan, this project as well as the slow project would not be able to go forward. So I will be voting, I just wanted to explain it because we've had several citizens speak at this here meeting as well as in prior meetings about their wishes, one way or the other. And I just wanted the citizens to understand where I was coming from. I'm concerned about the level of density. I remain concerned about the level of density. And for that reason, I do not think it fits in our, in that area, particularly given the rural nature, the agricultural nature. And we talk a lot about preserving agricultural nature and the rural nature. And I think this is where the bug stops in terms of this kind of project. So it's not personal to you or to you or to your organization. It's just my feeling about how the development is going on in our community. And so for that reason, I'll be not be supporting the preliminary PUD. Thank you.
All right.
As part of the final PUD approval process, will the bylaws be part of that discussion? Any agreements that will be part of the, okay, so it will be for us to review?
Yeah, we should get a draft copy of the master Dean bylaws for the condo portion of the project.
The reason I'm asking, thank you. The reason I'm asking is we've heard several of the residents nearby talk of how they're concerned for odors and equipment operation and also the nearness of the freeway. And just having the opportunity to see that future residents that are going to be living in this development are not warned, that's the wrong word for it, but, but notified that this is where you're going to be living in. And so that those concerns can be taken into account before anybody were to buy into this. I'm glad to see that we can.
I think they addressed that at another meeting. They were putting them in the deed.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I, I agree. I've seen that language in master Dean bylaws before, just kind of letting, putting people on notice that they're next to a farmer.
We don't want the farmers to be put under pressure to change their operation if, if this is the way it's done.
Because after all, we encourage agriculture, right?
We do. And I do understand Commissioner Moore's concern with density. I will say that they have, did reduce the outlying buildings. It's the central senior living high rise, well, three story, if that's a high rise. It is in Scioto Township.
It is on, on Baker Road.
Yeah, is the, where the increase is coming from, which doesn't change the, it changes the footprint a little, but not really the view print. Especially from Marshall Road or from Baker Road in Cedar. So it's not like it's changing, you know what I'm saying? That, that changes the view not very much at all. And it would be more, my concern would be more, are we getting people too close to the freeway? There's a row of buildings that are within a few hundred yards or a few hundreds, I don't know if it's in terms of yards or maybe in terms of feet here. They're close to the freeway and that concerns me. Would I want to buy there? No, would somebody else want to buy there? I bet we do, there will be people that will buy there. But that to me is a bigger concern than adding somewhere twenty four units in the high rise.
Well, density is about the whole project. And I've mentioned this before, last year, this, this came up in our discussions regarding the, of ending the master plan, et cetera. So this is, I'm just not news to all of us here. But I will say this, that I appreciate Mr. Johnson. I appreciate one aspect of, I mean, there are a couple of things I like about the project. But the one, one of the aspects I like about it is the, the entrance. The fact that it's not on Marshall Road. But I, I am also very cognizant of the fact of how it affects the neighbors. And I did, it's, you know, too, so it's, but I appreciate.
To work with the neighbors on, on that, so.
Maybe you should have more.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said the density, I was not taking notes. What is the increase in density, by the way, for the, for the, do you compute the numbers?
Say that again.
I was not taking notes on the density. You said the density has increased.
Yes.
So what was it before versus now?
So before it was about ninety, oof. Was it ninety two bits, so three, twelve, three hundred and, three hundred and twelve?
Three hundred and what?
Units, two thirty one.
Three hundred and twelve units. So the population density would be people per?
It was three eighty three and now it's, it's up to three fifty one, did I say?
You said three twelve.
No, I didn't want to say three twelve. I had it wrong at first.
So before it was three hundred and eighty three units. Now it is three hundred and?
Three fifty one, I believe. Yeah. Three fifty one.
It's a few units now.
There. See, there were two hundred and thirty one units of attached residential units.
We can ask the potential to clarify that.
How many units were there?
Let me just clarify. So there's two hundred, two hundred and thirty one of the one story units. That number is the same, you know, has been the same for a while. And there are a hundred and twenty rooms in the senior living facility. So that gives you a total of three hundred and fifty one units. Now, if you do the math, over a hundred and five acres, that's a little over three units per acre, which is modest by anyone's standards.
Stop there. Three, what is the density again? How many units per acre?
It's a little over three if you do the math.
So before, the documents I looked at in from 2019, there were three hundred and twenty three units before. The current count is three hundred and fifty one.
So what was the density before, sir, per acre?
Give me one second, I'll.
Does that measure, you have to go by units per acre or population per? I mean, that's the way.
Yeah, that says density is.
Yeah, that's density, right?
And before it was higher than the three, the.
So right now, it's the three, okay.
Yeah, bear with me one second.
So, so three fifty one divided by one oh five is three point three four.
Three point three four. Three fifty one is the number of units, one oh five is what?
The number of acres.
One oh five acres, okay. So that is before, or that's?
That's current.
Current, okay.
Yeah.
So again, next time.
Then it's three twenty three divided by one oh five.
How much?
No. Three twenty three. Three twenty-three.
Three twenty-three divided by one oh five, yeah.
Yeah, it's three point oh seven.
Three point oh seven. So the, is three point oh seven versus three point three four?
That sounds right.
That is units per acre. That's the measure.
Correct.
The U M, whatever.
And a hundred and twenty units are vertical. So there aren't unit, there aren't, there aren't, each unit is not getting three acres.
Right, no.
I mean, I get the calculation. I understand what the point is, but I just want to, in all reality, each unit's not getting three point, whatever, acres.
But I think what we're trying to do is, one, it, it's not just the, it's, it's the coverage. And so the greater the open space is really, you know, the more important, one of the, one of the important factors.
It's the goal.
That's fair. I understand that. And I think, but I think what we're losing here is that this kind of project, along with the Sloan project, that's down the road on Baker, eventually, it's all going to grow. We're not talking about one, I think we're talking about a plan for that area here. So when we talk about the area and what the plan is for the area, which is bigger than Marshall and Baker, all right, we're talking about increasing the roadway, maybe three lanes, maybe four lanes, because you're creating more and more development along that corridor.
But that's a different discussion, right?
Well, no, that's my discussion. I may not have said it well. I apologize for that. But I'm talking about what growth versus rural agricultural. I'm talking about growth, development versus rural and agricultural. And so I apologize for leaving that out.
No, but that's, no, that, I, you know, that's a valid piece, yeah.
That's an overarching thing you're talking about.
Yeah, because, you know, the four, two-lane, three-lane, four-lane roads don't come along with the first project, as we all know.
Right, right, right.
So what's the plan for the area?
Okay, the plan, that's the big question.
And that's what the master plan basically.
That's the big question, discussion.
Yeah, was about. But anyway, yeah, I want to, but thank you. No, that's, that's very good. Did, Chris, did you want to?
You know, just thoughts off the top of my head. The increased density doesn't bother me. I'd probably take the other attack, because, you know, looking at going from three point zero seven to three point three units per acre, the density really doesn't strike me as being, especially with, the open spaces remaining the same. They're not taking out any more natural features in the open space. So going up, I think that's a fine solution, especially if, you know, I think we'd say there was twenty-eight more units, and I don't, and maybe Joe can answer this, Mr. May. Residents, is that more of an assisted living facility that's going vertical?
Yes.
So we're not looking at more traffic by this, by going up. So I don't, so the open space is staying the same, and the traffic seems to be at least steady by, by going up those twenty-eight units. So I'm not as concerned. It's really, you know, getting into, is this meeting the intent of the supplemental regulations and the master plan, I think, as Mr. Luan said. And I was trying to Google through, or scroll through it, and trying to look through all of those, you know, is it meeting, you know, a lot of what's required? And, you know, I have to go back and keep looking, but I, I think it is, you know, to get to this stage. And we are in the preliminary phase, so.
Like I said, my bad for voting for the master plan.
Absolutely. I mean, it's no, you know, there's not a right or wrong.
I get it.
You know, from my perspective, so, and it's different than yours. That's perfectly acceptable.
Sure. And I think that's, Mr. Palmer, did you have any?
No, no, no. I just wanted to stress what Mr. Chan just said. The density, if that's the issue, it's not going up. I mean, that, those numbers are straightforward. There's not a lot of difference between point oh seven and point three four. But if there's any other issue that I'm not, I don't understand, then that's something you can talk about. And if the vision of the master plan not being fulfilled, which again, I don't have the privilege, but I haven't looked at it, then obviously, that's a bigger discussion, overarching discussion, which will be above and beyond this particular site. So anyway.
All right.
Nothing else I'd say.
And, yeah, I just have a couple of comments. And that, I, I do want to go back to the, the density, the fact that we do have a large part of open space preservation. I am, I want, I'm comfortable that, you know, you've heard us loud and clear about the bylaws and going a little, not only the right to farm, but, you know, really acknowledging that this is a development that is next to agricultural and agricultural land that Scioto Township has a high priority to preserve. It is on the high priority preserve list, that adjacent parcel. And the other thing is, I do want to stress, as you move forward and hopefully, you know, secure a senior living partner, I want to really emphasize, I feel extremely strongly about a net zero-ready development. And I say net zero-ready, because I understand that the, the solar issues, there's a lot to resolve there. But if we don't, if, if we as a planning commission don't really work with developers to make sure that what they're building is efficient and ready to be net zero, we're doing a disservice to our whole entire community. Because any new development will bring with it a legacy of fossil fuel use, that this community and the residents that are there will be paying off in, for a very long time. So, yeah, I think it is, as critical as you is, if this moves forward, that we take that net zero-ready design seriously, even more than a LEED certification. And there is a specific energy use profile for a net zero development. I think that's really important. Also, I would like to, and I don't know, Mr. Luan, if there's a way, I mean, the property owners, you know, I look at that and that orientation for both the north and the south properties and the access off of that, I think, in my mind, solves a lot of future problems. It may not be great for the gas station, you know, person that wants, you know, a direct access off the highway. But, I mean, is there anything, I mean, how can the township really, if we can, look at how that north and south piece of the property could be developed and, you know, work with you? Because it is an investment, it is an area in transition. And how do we make, you know, help, you know, that happen in, in a reasonable way, so that that property, you know, has more value than it presently does? Because that, to me, is important. It's important to you guys, and it's important to the township as a whole, that we really think about that the property to the north and the south, as it goes through, you know, a transition in its development.
I think, I think that can be addressed partly in, also in the master deed and bylaws, or some other agreement. But I had the opportunity to speak with one of our speakers this evening, a month ago or so, and that discussion of providing access to their property off of the boulevard arose. And at that time, was looked at somewhat favorably by, by the gentleman in the audience. So I think, I think that has to be memorialized in some way, so it actually happens, in that, when and if that time comes for that property to develop, the current property owner isn't giving a hard time that they can't have access to that boulevard. I mean, that's got to happen. That's got to be somehow written into some agreement. And I understand Mr. Johnson's concern, in that whoever has access to that boulevard should contribute to its maintenance. And that's the other part of it, you know.
But not the current property owner.
Not until they have.
Not until.
Until they have use of it, yes, yes.
Why would they pay? They didn't change the road.
No, not the current owners.
What even, even future owners, they didn't change it. That's something being thrust upon the property owner.
Yeah, but this, but this is actually a, this is a better solution than the odd little drive they have for commercial development. This will actually, this very well could make those properties more profitable, because there's going to be an access off a dedicated boulevard. And there could be some additional commercial traffic.
They have to use the boulevard, but if they choose to, then they would take part in the maintenance, I think is worth the discussion.
I know, but you see, the changing of the area where the entrance is, is changing how this man can use, how he can get his equipment out from his home.
Yeah.
That's being thrust upon him.
Well, imagine if it was being developed as a commercial property, and all of a sudden, it went from, each home generates approximately ten trips per day, so there's three homes there, so it's generating about thirty trips per day. What if a commercial operation that was generating five hundred trips per day went in? So now, all of a sudden, that boulevard is being impacted by commercial development that's not there right now. So alls I'm saying is, if a commercial development was to occur, that, that increased the load on that, not now, you're right, current way, no, they shouldn't have to pay for a thing. But if, if they were to develop that into some sort of commercial enterprise, that creates a traffic load on that boulevard, they should be required to, whoever that new future owner is, that commercial tenant, or not, or the commercial owner should.
Commercial owner.
Yeah, they should be required to participate in some sort of maintenance.
Should it be developed? And it would be based on the use, you know, you come up with the traffic use.
So you're saying memorialize it in the agreement?
I think that should be upfront, so there's no, so there's no misunderstandings three years from now, or four years from now.
It's memorialized, yes. I just wanted to say that I agree with your points about the net zero-ready design. I think it's imperative. I don't think we want to wait around till we don't have water in our plumes, and a whole bunch of other stuff that other states are experiencing, before we think about the effects of climate change. So I think it's important that we start to plan for, ahead of time.
So we'll be looking for that in the final PUD proposal.
Yeah.
I got some questions still, if that's okay.
Planning Commission?
Yeah. I want to say one thing, too, is that, I don't know if you guys knew who Spelling Clark is? He had told me that there will never be another truck stop or anything like that over around that right now, because they already put three in, and I bought there before those three truck stops are in. So he already jammed me one time already for trying to sell my property. I already had Flying J going to buy it, and they couldn't buy it. Now, other thing is, is, is I don't know why I have to put up with the inconvenience of what they're trying to put in, when M.D.O.T. gave me my right of way to get to my house, right there on Baker Road, not taking me down another way and coming back. That's one thing I don't understand, how they can do that. So I think I'm going to have to hire a lawyer that actually specializes in, in roads, so I can find out if this is legal or not, that they can do this. And another thing is, is, we talk about major and everything, I still, still can't understand why I have to pay taxes to go out and buy land for us to preserve, when there's land already right behind my property there, that's already agricultural. And I'm spending tax dollars to go out and buy this, when it's already right there, and we're going to spend money on. And also, I was curious.
Last points, or what was that point you were just making?
Point was, is, why am I paying tax dollars to preserve land? To get the kind of land that they're trying to change the zoning on right now?
Yeah.
When it's already right there, and we don't have to buy it. It's already right there. But if we allow, if we keep allowing this to happen in our township, then we're never going to be able to buy any more property. Another thing is, is, is I'm still very concerned about coming up out of my driveway and having to make that right turn and go and head south, because the fact is, you can do a semi all you want. A semi can turn a ninety-degree turn. A tag along can't, because you are pinching your hitch in the back when you're going to turn. And also, I don't like the idea up there of not giving me enough room up there, because I want to head north. I want to have to sit in that striped thing that they're talking about and block someone else in, so they can't get out. In the meantime, they're going to be hocking their horn at me, wondering why, you know, why am I holding them up? You know how impatient people are now? So I guess it's all, oh, and one more thing, too, is, is I really don't appreciate a professional engineer coming on my property and spraying, spraying big old bottles like this on my trees, either with orange, I don't like that either. Thirty-five feet down my property, I don't like that.
Mr., could you explain the issue? Do you think it's, the process for the.
Presentation.
And their ability to purchase right away versus later.
Yeah, did you, Commissioner Hei, did you want to?
To address that, we do have a millage that we're, we're using to purchase the development rights of land within the township. We are doing that. We can't buy everything that we want. And I think that, I would just like to say, it seems like we missed the boat with this property, when the owners decided that they wanted to sell it to the developers rather than sell it to the O P C, the developer. So we tried, and we didn't succeed, is what it's been told to me. So unfortunately, we can't get everything that we want. It would have been really nice to preserve that part.
And I know we can, so it just, it just makes me feel like, why do I got to pay taxes on something when the thing could have stayed right where it's at right now?
Would have been nice.
That's all I'm getting at. I'm paying taxes, and I, and then they won't let me build, won't let me sell my place before. It's just, I'm just sick and tired of getting caught in a trap every time.
So, Mr. Spicer, as I understand, part of the process is that we don't, we have some of the money from our millage, but we also have matching funds.
I understand that.
And we don't get those right away, and all that process takes time to aggregate money.
Sure.
Meanwhile, if a developer comes in and says, hey, I'll give you this amount of money, that's how we lose out on.
Sure. I understand it, thank you.
And I would like to also address one other point.
Yes, please.
And that is, the boulevard entrance/exit discussion. I don't know how we would do that. I don't know how that it works, but it would be really a good neighborly gesture to work with the neighbors and find out what is the optimum solution here. You may have the optimum solution that M.D.O.T. cares about, but I don't know whether you have any future discussions on the table before you come back to the planning commission. Would be a suggestion that you work with users of that, of that service drive.
I think you're meaning include them in the discussion with M.D.O.T.
That's right. So that M.D.O.T. may not be thinking about, I don't know what a tag along is, I apologize. I assume it's a trailer hitch with a long trailer.
Yeah, yeah.
With a long-wheelbase trailer that turns in a certain, yeah, I mean, you got to, so you may, it may be that it wasn't all discussed, it may be that it was, but they didn't hear it discussed, and M.D.O.T. may not have thought about it, I don't.
I'm just sort of upset, too, that we were never involved with M.D.O.T. Developer didn't even allow us or tell us, okay, you want to talk with M.D.O.T.? No, they didn't do that. They're getting something they want, and I'm getting something jammed down my throat. I don't like it.
So that's our job, is to.
Oh, I know what your job is. I know they are.
No, no, our job here is to be the coordinator, and I'd like to see it coordinated.
Yeah, and if the township can facilitate that with the developer.
Yeah, certainly, I can work with Mr. Johnson on that.
I think that might ask, you know, be sure that the, the solution is the best one that we can come up with, and also answer some of your questions about, you know, the M.D.O.T. access and future access and all, you know, those parameters.
I just don't want you to tell me what I have to do. I've been doing something for thirty-eight years.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right.
I think that we've covered, just if I might interject, I think we've covered. I think we've covered quite a bit that it would be very difficult to delineate in a motion except for the, as discussed in, there might be some highlight, you know, as discussed in the meeting tonight, but there might be some highlights that we might want to see. I'm prepared to make a motion as an approval so that it would proceed to final. But within that, I'd like to get a consensus. I mean, are we, am I wasting my time by doing that? Or I know that we have one no vote, very likely. But if we had multiple, that would change the effort.
We have to make a decision either way, so.
Yeah, no, no, I know what I'm going to do, but, so.
I would like to, you know, I think I would support a motion that would be in favor and with, you know, as discussed, now that we have the, we're doing the transcription, so that helps. But I think we should, you know, like coordinating the MDOT meeting, pursue the net zero ready construction for all buildings.
What was that last?
For all buildings, not just the village, yeah. And, let's see, what, I'm trying to think of some of the other, the other key points.
Provide a statement that all residents are moving near a known agricultural area.
So then, you know, the discussions on our, on the agreement.
Yeah, the agreements reflecting the Boulevard access for adjacent properties and then the, you know, I don't, maybe respect for the adjacent ongoing agricultural uses.
Okay. Are there any others that anybody wants to see delineated? We, of course, have it recorded, but that's difficult to parse.
Yeah, and I would say, as, along with the best management practices for stormwater, that they maximize the infiltration. I mean, that, I think that's really important, yeah.
Maybe it's too late, but I know Sally and Stacy are here.
Oh, they had.
From, we generally. Not sure if they have any thoughts or comments at this point.
Stacy or Sally, did you have any comments that you wanted to? I mean, we would definitely, you know, do the concerns noted in your reports.
I'd say our letter from December 27th still stands as is since we haven't seen any new plans. So I've gone over those before, so I don't have anything new to add at this point.
Your letter was January 3rd, was it January?
January 4th was our last full review. Yes.
I should correct, our letter was dated December 27th with a revision on January 3rd.
You said December 22nd?
It would be January 3rd, actually. That updated one was the January 3rd.
Correct.
January 3rd would be the date that we put in the motion.
December 27th.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about the December 27th.
Just the January 1st.
Are we ready? And we'll collaborate.
All right.
The motion is for Heritage Woods preliminary PUD 0821001 PSP 20004 that based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the Planning Commission finds Heritage Woods preliminary PUD received by the township meets the qualifications for considerations as a PUD as outlined in Section 36, 245(c) of the zoning ordinance. Based upon the information received and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the Planning Commission finds Heritage Woods, and, hmm, is it at this point that I should put it in? Reflected in the minutes of the meeting, the Planning Commission finds that the Heritage Woods preliminary PUD planned would be received by the township on this date with qualifications that the developers.
I think you can just add those at the, at the end and making this determination, the following additional conditions apply.
Okay. So meets, meets the findings pursuant to the Section 36, 249(c) of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval of the, to the Township Board for action on the preliminary plan with the caveat that the developer work on net zero construction.
Net zero ready construction for all buildings.
Zero ready construction for all buildings, that they work with MDOT and the current users of the MDOT service drive along Baker Road for the Boulevard access and that the agreements that are in the final PUD for the residents of the development acknowledge that they are moving into an agricultural area, that there will be odors associated with that, noise, they'll be, they're near a freeway. So they, we will be looking at the agreements so that we make sure that the residents of this development are aware of where they're moving.
And then, yeah, and then concerns noted in the planners' review of January 4th?
Oh, I thought we also wanted to, the best practices.
Oh, the, yeah, maximize infiltration.
Maximize infiltration rates as part of the best practices proposals. And in making this determination, we want to make sure that they address the concerns noted in the planners' review dated January 4th, 2022 and the engineers' concerns of their report revised in January 3rd of 2022. What did I miss?
And, and.
The Boulevard access.
Well, I think we did the Boulevard access.
And to work with MDOT and the current users of the service drive for the Boulevard access design.
And to ensure that future.
Oh, yes, I can talk about the properties to the north and south of the Boulevard are, that they are, their concern, their ability to make use of the Boulevard in the future should it be developed into commercial properties be also written into agreements so that.
You just, I think the access should be, yeah, defined.
There we go.
Okay.
Had more to do with their contribution to the maintenance of the entrance.
Yeah, we could say. That's all part of this presentation that they gave, which is part of the minutes. So we still can hold them to that without, just by pulling back up the.
We could just say Boulevard access and maintenance agreement.
Yeah. Okay.
There we go.
Okay, I see.
It's really future.
It is.
So future Boulevard access and maintenance agreements.
Commercial properties.
Future commercial properties.
Potential.
Okay. So the planners' review, the engineers' review, the discussion at this, this meeting, the respect for the ongoing agricultural uses, best management practices, maximizing the infiltration, the involving the neighbors in that final MDOT Boulevard design access and then assuring that the Boulevard access and maintenance agreements for future commercial use are defined.
And you also had, you didn't just say net zero ready.
And then the net zero ready.
You did before.
Yeah.
But you'd like, we would like them to work toward that.
Receive that in their final design. All right. That's it.
Thank you.
That's a lot of, okay. Do you need a short break for cash or are you?
No.
Is there, is there support for the motion on the table? Okay, okay, so the motion was made by Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Chang. Further discussion? All right. I'll roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson?
Yes.
Yes, okay, 4 to 1.
So this will be moving on then to the Township Board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone who attended this evening. Move on. Reports on commission activity we met last week. If anyone wants to give an update on if anything changed.
Not in a week.
Not in a week, okay. Anything from our engineers in a week?
No. No, Zeb Phase 4 tree clearing has started. You'll see crews out there soon if you haven't already, but that's all I have.
Okay. All right, then, we'll move on to the minutes of the meeting. And I want to say, these minutes, this is a week. All right? So I would like.
You're not taking good notes because I know who did these.
These are.
I got spoilt. And it's too bad that we can't get transcriptions in-house like that because that was quite.
And so I want to make sure we go.
I want approval of the minutes of February 21st, 2022.
I don't know if it changes, but I don't know if other people.
I'm sorry?
I don't know if other people have any changes. So I don't want to second any of the word.
It's a little bit better.
Yeah, this is good.
You guys have moved the seating up a little closer to the.
Is this also a transcription?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll take credit.
Yeah, it does work a little bit better.
It feels a little more, we're in the same room.
Yeah, and it, and good job on the camera work.
Yeah, I tried to switch.
I was trying to switch back and forth.
Thank you for taking that camera off.
Well, see, I'm right here so you can't see.
So are we too sweet to do that?
Well, that was you.
I don't know how it went off. Yeah, me.
Okay.
Okay.
I was coming from the TV behind you.
There was, there's one misspelling on SIO on page eight.
Wow, good catch.
Yeah, other than that.
Page eight, correction of the spelling of SIO two.
On what number?
Number 11.
Read through the margin, isn't it?
Oh. I was bogged down by the 600 pages of the document, to be honest with you. So I'll amend my motion.
You know what I'm bogged down by is getting three revisions of the minutes. I mean, of the agenda.
As much as I love to prepare ahead of time with this gig, I always wait till 5 o'clock. I mean, there's so many.
Yeah, I think, and what, what comes in are correspondence, minutes, that kind of thing. So the core of the, you know, project review typically doesn't change, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can go ahead and do the project piece and then wait and just read the incoming. Yeah, I call them incoming.
Can you revise my motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say is, the Board of Trustees sets up their agendas with hyperlinks to the sections. Now, the Board of Trustees doesn't do it. The office staff does. And the Planning Commission doesn't do this, the office staff does. Is it possible to get the same link?
Yeah, because I'm scrolling down the page 68 today.
Now that they have the transcription, that relieves a chunk of work. So maybe we can get our hyperlinks done.
So that's all I was going to say.
So you want to dumbend your motion?
Yeah, I was going to, yeah, move to approve the minutes as revised. The minutes of February 21st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion to put the minutes as corrected. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. And I'll, any other? Yeah, any other business? I will make a request about the hyperlinks. All right, all right, then I move a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there support?
Yep.
Commissioner Hyde, okay, and voice vote?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 9:43.
Recording stopped.